All right. We'll go ahead and get started. It's 8:35. Do roll calls to start. So, we know that Kate and Mike are out today and we're currently missing James Manning. John Gould?
Here.
Dave Palazzetti?
Here.
Brian Sylvia?
Here.
Chip McGarrett?
Here.
Bob Littlefield? Terry Lynch?
Here.
And James Manning?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So, we have...we're only missing two today. We have a gorm. All right. Moving on to public correspondence. I did send out one thing this morning. Many of you probably didn't even see it. It wasn't necessarily sent to the school building committee, but it's been consistent. And I know that Chris has been getting these emails, so I wanted to kind of just bring it to everyone's attention. Did we have any other public correspondence, Kate? All right. So Maggie Martin, as we know, at the behind the site, she's been actively involved in the project and communicating with us. She sent the correspondence, and she's sent this multiple times about the parking for construction and concerns about the fact that it's going to be close to her residence. So, I was hoping, Kate, I don't know if you can speak to this at all, or have we looked at alternate options? Has Gilbane looked at alternate options for that? Do we have some sort of response?
We haven't.
Can you just come up just a little? Sorry, I know you're trying to get prepared for everything. We'll give you a two-minute break to get...
Obviously, it's only 12:15. Yes, we have looked at alternate locations. If you give me a moment, I'll pull up the site logistics plan. I'll ask Tony to come up and we can talk through some of the other options that we've looked at. And we'll show you where it's currently planned, which is, right now, the furthest out of the limit of disturbance for the excavation for our foundations. So, give me one moment to pull it up, and I'll share it on the screen.
Yeah. We'll just give you a minute and get going. All right. So, hey, Chip, can you put that up on the...oh, you did. You can just...you want to just swap out and we'll get you in? We'll get a new one?
All right. So, as you can see on the screen, that maroon area is where the construction parking is planned, as well as the orange area is lay-down storage. There'll be Connex boxes, materials that are stored there. And that is the...Maggie Martin is kind of right where that construction storage trailer text is. Her home is directly abutting that area. There will be a six-foot scrimmed construction fence separating that area. However, some of the other areas that we did look at is kind of by where the student parking is, as well as kind of further down where we've got construction visitor parking. So, those areas were explored, but I do believe they are disruptive to some of our paths of utility. Tony, is that correct?
Yeah, we do have utilities that run...sorry. We do have utilities that run in that area. I mean, is the next...yeah. Just so you can sort of see how much of the site the building occupies, that's a good one, right? So, directly...sorry. Directly above the building, there's generator, transformer, significant number of utilities that run sort of on the north side. And they also follow that if there's kind of a ring road around the building, the new building, as you can see, utilities sort of run in that ring road. So, the most, I'll say, isolated area from construction, and obviously, really, the one area where there's no building or utilities is where we've put that parking purposefully. And quite frankly, on a construction site, that's the area that will be least active. Essentially, trades come in, they park, they go to work in the building, they likely will return during break times, lunchtime, return to their cars and go home. The majority of the activity will actually be on the construction site itself and where the building is being constructed, not in the parking area. So, it's actually the least active area of the site. Sort of the thought process behind selecting that location. Hopefully, that's useful.
What's the start time of the construction?
Yeah, traditionally, seven to three, right? Are the work...
Is that consistent with the town regulations for noise? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's what we...you are right, it's seven o'clock as well.
Yeah, I got it. I'll double-check. I can't remember if it's seven. It's pretty standard is seven.
Yeah.
So, I'll double-check with Jamie. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I just agree that that is going to be an actual quiet area. You've got the storage containers that'll actually put up a sound barrier, then you've got the fence that'll put up a barrier. And the employees will come at seven, they'll park, they'll go to work, and then they'll come back at the end of the day. So, it actually gives you a buffer from the louder work, especially the excavation that'll be going on.
That area will ultimately be a parking lot. So, towards the tail end of construction, that parking area will be dispersed to other available areas on the site. And work will commence in that area. There's some grading and paving work that has to happen in that area. But for majority of construction, I agree with you, that is going to be the quietest area of the site.
I'm going to ask, just in case it comes up, is there any availability of hazard being used for parking for construction vehicles? And I say this knowing that this school also has needs, but I just want to answer that question.
We have not discussed with Chip the option of using hazard, so I would defer to Chip.
No, with the...there's a bus loop that's in that hazard lot for the Transition Academy, which is in there. We have staff parking for that program, as well as our IT department parks there. We're losing ballpark, a dozen spaces. It's going to be much tighter in there, so there really isn't room for anything else. And then, there are some people that come in and out, like a parent might need to get something and meet with the tech department. So, it wouldn't work for us losing that parking.
One other option we could explore is an anti-idling policy in the parking lot to, you know, if somebody is taking a break or having lunch in their car, that the engine isn't running and, you know, putting emissions towards the abutting property.
All right. Anybody else? Yeah, I just wanted to have the discussion because I think we need to get back to Maggie. And if the answer is the parking needs to be there, then it needs to be there. I don't want to keep kicking her out on, like, non-answers. You know, if, from what you're telling us, that is the location that's the most appropriate, let her know that. It is what it is. As far as anti-idling, one thing I would say is we'll try to mitigate it to the best of our ability. But I think, you know, not...I've seen this email come in over the past months. I think not giving a clear answer is going to be worse for us in the future.
Yeah, I will connect with Chris Spiegel on this. I believe that's who the email was addressed to, to be able to provide the response we're discussing today. I do believe he's given her responses in the past to this effect, but we will make sure that is a clear and definitive response.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item number three, which is discussion and update regarding construction documents review. Kate, you got this one?
I just want to...can I go back on that loop? I'm going to go back on the other...
Go back on the parking, sure.
Yeah, if that's going to be a permanent parking spot with the students coming into school at 7:00 a.m., you know, for the whole school year, we probably should look at the landscaping plan to see what we can do to mitigate sound transferring in that area because it's going to be something the school department's going to have to deal with every single day.
Yeah, so that is a faculty lot. And that was a conversation with the planning department, is ensuring there was adequate landscaping buffer, as well as fencing. So, that has been taken into account in the landscaping plans.
Thank you.
But just to bounce off that point, I think what Dave's saying is sooner than later, trying to get that landscape in, so put that as a high priority on...as soon as we can not use that as a lay-down area, and maybe just if we do nothing else as far as landscape, get that landscape in so it matures throughout the course of the project.
Yeah, we can take a look at sequencing of when that work is planned to be done.
All right. You're on for the next item, construction documents review.
All right. So, construction documents, we have a 60% estimating set that is coming out in August, on August 4th. That is going to be our last estimating set. It's just going to be a kind of double-check of where we are with the numbers. We'll have actual bid numbers that are coming in. We have the enabling package that's already been bid out, which cumulatively was slightly under budget. The early bid packages, we're going through scope reviews right now. So, at the time we receive the 60% estimate, which we have a reconciliation on August 20th, by the time we receive those, we'll have about 30% of the package already with solidified numbers. So, it'll be a good check for the remainder of the packages, predominantly architectural, electrical, some of the extra items that we did not bid out, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and of the building itself, that will be bid out at the end of August, early into September.
So, anybody have any questions on that particular item? All right. We'll move on to DEM permitting. Update?
Philip Conte with Studio Jade. Update regarding RIDEM permitting. We've asked our site civil engineer to weekly reach out to them via the portal as a way of continuing to check on their status. Additionally, Sam from Garret Follow has made contact with the actual reviewer and has called him to ask them to give it the proper attention. But RIDEM is in its current state understaffed and overworked. As of maybe two weeks ago, we were projecting about six weeks to receive some comments. So, we're trying to accelerate that. We hope to get comments within the next three weeks. But I can update you at our next building committee meeting. Right now, there's nothing I would suggest in terms of soliciting political leverage at this point, but I will defer to you if you want to try that. Maybe at our next SBC meeting, I could offer some clarity on that topic.
So, what...at what point are we raising the red flag here? I think that's what I've asked is, should it be now, or should it be...I just don't want to wait too long before we...I don't know what else we can do. We can apply maybe political pressure, but I know that we're not the only ones in discussions with planning and other developers. Everyone's going through this right now. So, I'm sure everyone's pulling strings.
So, we've got probably about five weeks before we really need this. Five to six weeks, as Phil said, that was their timeline last week on comments. We are looking to submit our foundations permit on August 1st, and having approval by September 1st. The Gilbane team is looking to start excavation for foundations at the end of September. So, if we're talking about timeframes, our building department and our planning department are dependent, as well as our erosion permits. Those are dependent on our RIDEM approvals. So, in a nutshell, we need to get those before the end of September, or we'll delay our excavation for foundations. We're requesting that the building department proceed with their review of documents prior to receiving this, so that as soon as we get that RIDEM approval, they can check that box and issue us our permit. So, we're looking at those parallel paths. But essentially, we will be on hold with both planning and building until we receive this. So, if it delays into the end of September, that will impact our schedule.
Who's the reviewer? Who's the reviewer?
I know Sam knows who it is. I don't know who it is.
Just let me know.
Yeah, all right. I'll let you know.
Dave's going to go stake at his house. All right. Any other questions, comments on the DEM permits? I will say, I did talk to Jamie Rabbit about teeing everything up on the planning side to make sure everything was done except for the acceptance of that. So, hopefully, I'd encourage you to be in touch with him and make sure that everything is, you know, the letter's written, everything's good. So, because as soon as we get those DEM permits, he can file the final plan. All right? All right. First day of school logistics. Next item on the agenda.
Sure. Good thing I've got it handy. It's like an eye test to try and see that one.
Yeah, it is X U S two W. Yeah, that's good enough. So, I think everybody remembers, last time we were here, we recommended approval of RTAs for the enabling work. Those went to town council, were approved. We have engaged J.R. Venagro, who is the contractor we're hiring, to do this sort of enabling work to build the road around Hazard and to put the fence up. There's some other work as well, utility relocations, et cetera. So, they're engaged, their contract is written, their insurance is becoming compliant. We have a kickoff meeting scheduled with them next week, just to make initial coordination to ensure we're prepared to start on the 4th in earnest, which we are. We shared our schedule the last time we sat. They have already confirmed that. We need to put some more detail into that, just relative to detailed milestones for the smaller steps within those larger bars that you had seen. However, they have already confirmed and acknowledged the schedule that was established. One other activity we talked about was getting with Chip to develop, I'll say, some pretty pictures to share prior to school opening that you could distribute, so everyone has an understanding of the expectation when they arrive at school. Mark and Laura, our onsite people, are pulling these images, and I've asked them to schedule some time with Chip just to go over them. We can modify them, edit them, put the proper text in, whatever's necessary to help you with that. So, Mark and Laura are going to reach out next week to pick a time to do that. I don't believe they have yet, but that's their intention.
That's fine, as long as it's like...as long as we can get it out by, like, the 20th of August, that's plenty of time to give people a heads-up about how they're going to enter the building.
Yeah. Other than that, generally, that's really the update. It's confirmation of what we discussed the last time. Everything is on track and on schedule, and contractors are engaged.
Any questions, comments from the committee? Just for the benefit of all, the easement is signed from Rhode Island Energy. The service agreement is on my desk. I'll get that finished up, and the town manager will sign it. So, we're in good shape there. Hopefully, Rhode Island Energy is moving along. Got the other pieces?
Yes, it is a very linear process. So, once they receive the service agreement back, then they put us on the schedule. So, we'll hear what they have to say as far as dates. Once we get a more firm date from them, we'll have a better understanding of when the shutdown will be. So, that will impact school. I know that there are some faculty events. So, we are right now at the mercy of Rhode Island Energy for that date. But once we do receive their schedule, we'll be reviewing and confirming those dates with Michael and Chip.
You got something to say, Dave, or...
I'm saying that's a linear process. It's a pretty good example.
Well, we'll turn around. My understanding, too, is I don't know if...my understanding is they required payment upfront. That's what the email I had seen. So, that's another thing that we'll have to coordinate, make sure we get our check ready.
Yep, we don't get on their schedule until they've got money in their hand. One other important utility relocation is our fiber. So, Doug Snow is coordinating with Cox to rerun the fiber, which is the internet for the district, which needs to be temporarily relocated. So, that agreement's already signed. We're just waiting for Cox to provide us an update on schedule for that as well.
And water? Water's being relocated as well, right?
Water is in Gilbane's hand. There are some gate valves that they can do that I don't believe they need to engage the water company.
Yeah, so, the initial activity is actually to do some GPR, to actually find the exact location of that, to determine the necessity of relocation, and then the work will be done. But we own both of those in that enabling package, the GPR to identify the location, and then the actual relocation. The limits of that, obviously, will be defined by the GPR and the existence of that utility within the excavation for the footprint of the building. But it's all on our...
Ground penetrating radar.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We love acronyms.
Anything else on that one? So, August 4th was the date, right?
August 4th is mobilization, yes.
All systems go, and we should see a road by start of school.
Yes, September 30th is their wrap-up date.
August 30th.
Thank you, sorry. August 30th. Sorry, Chip, hope I didn't give you a heart attack on that one. So, it is right before the start of school, but the roadway will be in prior to that.
I did send out an internal email to all the directors. This may impact, you know, Rich Bourbonay, Bo Brown, like our highway, just in case there's any calls that come in. They know what's going on. Good. Anything else? All right, moving on to Gilbane office space logistics.
So, I can give the latest. So, spaces were walked through with Chip identified. Superintendent had developed a lease agreement, which there's, I'll say, some back and forth on the language with to better define some terms within it because it really doesn't align perfectly with, I'll say, our contract, right? Things were done in vacuums. So, those things need to be aligned, as well as there's some BCI Corey check language within that lease that may or may not apply, that we need to navigate. So, I'll say, right now, anyway, language is being tweaked and shared back and forth to refine and finalize. My gut tells me that may not be done by the time August 4th arrives. That won't affect our ability to start. We're going to work out of our trucks or whatever we need to do. So, we may not be there on August 4th in that space, but I think ultimately, we'll work through what that language is and then move ahead accordingly. But it will not affect the start of any of our work, I'll say.
Any questions, comments from the committee? All right. We'll move on to groundbreaking logistics planning.
So, we started the conversation earlier this week at our OAC meeting to start the planning efforts for our groundbreaking ceremony. We would like to hold a ceremony after school returns in September. We haven't gotten a whole lot farther than that, so we need to establish a group, a planning group. We can lead the effort based on our collective experience, but we would like to establish a group. Chip, we'd love you to be involved in that as well. And John Gould, we'd love your involvement as well, as far as helping in logistics and orchestrating the event that's going to be onsite. But it is a...it is a big and important event for this community who's been working on this project for many, many years. And we want to make sure that the groundbreaking reflects the amount of effort and time that has been put into this project.
You said after school. My question is, do we want to do it...we had talked at one time about doing it during the school day? I don't know if that's...if I heard that correctly, that's fine.
Yes, I'm sorry. I meant after-school returns in session. But timing is flexible. We perfectly...it'd be perfectly acceptable to do it during the day. I would only just note, if there's anybody that is involved that has a day job that wouldn't be able to attend, we may want to consider that.
Got it.
Anybody else have any input? So, what I'm hearing is the plan is to create, like, a task force of select members to plan this thing over the next couple of months? Are we thinking timeframe-wise when we think this is going to be, like, generally? We talk in October, November?
I would say September, mid-September. It doesn't necessarily need to correlate to activities that are happening onsite. One kind of fun feature is when we do have excavators and big machinery in the background for photo ops. That makes it a little bit more fun than just an empty site. So, I would say later in September would probably be appropriate, after the dust settles from school starting up again.
Billy, you got something?
I was just going to say, based on our recent experience, the schedule of any dignitaries that you may be inviting typically drives the schedule. If you're looking for the governor, for example, or other legislators that have supported the project. So, just keep that in mind. I think that may push the schedule a little farther along. It is not uncommon for groundbreaking to be after work is started, by the way.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I heard September, but we're fast approaching in August. Minimum six weeks you need to get notifications, start the process of coordinating. So, I would agree that, you know, we may be looking more towards October on that. So, the point being, let's get the task force going, whoever that may be, and let's start that logistic planning.
When are we thinking for an initial group meeting?
I would say we should start next week.
Okay. So, do Tuesday or Wednesday work for you guys for next week?
Yeah, Tuesdays are good. No, next Tuesday, I'm in an all-day meeting.
Or Wednesday?
Yep.
All right, so why don't we...I can be flexible during the...like, at any point in the morning or early afternoon. So, if you want to just pick a time, then we can start inviting people to that.
Okay. Any thoughts about who on your side you'd like to include? From our side, I would say somebody from Gilbane, Kate... From our side, I would say somebody from Gilbane, Kate, yourself, Michael, if there's anybody else that you would like to involve?
I would say definitely Terry should be involved and I'll think of a few more. But I think it might be good too if we offered people like, you know, a Microsoft Teams option or whatever, or we can do it. We can have an in-person and that or just make it fully Zoom either way. Okay?
Yep.
All right, moving on to memorials, artifacts, task force and inventory. You guys good? That's okay. So this is a memorials and artifacts task force and inventory. I know that Kate was working with you on this, but.
Yes, I do not have an update on this item. I believe Kate and Chip and Terry were working, possibly reaching out to the Sarabo family regarding the monument that's by the old playground.
Yeah, I talked to, through text with Rick. He's asking if we could do a bench with, with a placard and memorializing that area. That's, that's the initial thought and he said we can talk about the wording later on. So that's the, that's our latest that we've had.
As far as the rest of Hazard Field, I am not currently aware. And I have asked staff of any memorial trees that are planted out there. We are, we do want to move those apple trees as I've made you aware, but that, that's not because of memorial reasons. That's just because we don't want to lose those particular trees in the greenhouse area, but we've done that through email. So I'm not aware of anything right now. Certainly if anyone else is, we can, we can take a look at that. The rest of it, I think where we landed for the, for like the, the in-building memorials is something that we need to work on this fall. But I think where we agreed was that we would have a space in the new building and then we would figure out ways to move specific things. Like so one thing, for example, that can be done is you take a, like, like a mural, for example. You take a picture of that mural, you frame it, and then it goes on this memorial wall in the new building. So I, I think there's lots of ways we can get creative to move things over. That's going to be a more intense process because there are a lot of things in the building that, that are, are going to be related to that. So we want to do that carefully. But I think if you have a designated space, then we're, then that's the parameters that we need to work with. And we need to figure out how to memorialize all of these things in the new building.
And I will note the memorial bricks outside of Hazard are already noted to be salvaged by the, in the enabling contract.
There's one more memorial that's unrelated to the school project, but should be made aware of it. So if you notice at the Hazard building, there's a war memorial that's prominently displayed and it's been there for a long time. But a member of the community, who was also on the 250th U.S. Anniversary Committee, you know, our, I guess, whatever we call 250 years. But they, they are proposing a memorial to the side of that one that would recognize people that fought in the Revolutionary War that were not recognized. And it might have 33 names on it, but they're, they're getting pretty involved on some of the design. But I don't think it's prudent, and I spoke to my public services director, to have them move forward with a design or actively engage in any construction plans until the school's done, because that, that's going to be an active construction site, number one. And number two, it has to fit with the vision of the schools, what type of memorial. They, they have to have a say in the matter. So we pause that plan until the school's pretty much done, rather than getting involved. And I just want to make you aware of it, even though it's not affecting your separate memorials and trees and so forth.
There, there's one thing I want to make sure we document. So as Kate mentioned, we're salvaging the bricks that are in that area of the temporary road that we're going to be starting in a couple of weeks. But I want to make sure we're all clear. We're going to go ahead and demolish that ceramic tile and structure and replace that with this memorial bench. There will be a period of time that that memorial bench would probably come at the end of the project with the other landscaping features. I just want to make sure we're all clear that that's our intent.
Yeah, I, I've, I've talked to him a little bit about that and I will reiterate that to him later today.
If I could make a suggestion, we get that in writing. And I'm not saying, I just, I want to make sure we're crystal clear so after the fact is, is not a little of this going on and then we're on the hook. So just, if we could communicate and just confirm through email or something that just says, you know, here's our plan, are you in agreement? Yes, great. You know, just to make sure. And all these memorials, same way, if we can get something in writing, all the better. It just helps reduce confusion later on, because time goes by. It's going to be another three years till we get this project done, so my suggestion only. All right, moving on to change order requests, process and procedures. Kate?
Yes, so we, this was also a topic that we broached on Monday. As we start construction, change orders are a normal, natural part of this process. They can come for a variety of reasons, whether it's an unforeseen condition, if they hit ledge that we didn't see on any of our investigations, or there's something else that we didn't foresee, if there's an owner request for a betterment or change, if the AHJ's fire marshal comes and said, I need another sprinkler head here, or if there is an error or omission on the drawings. Those are items that are covered by our owner's contingency. They're outside of our construction contract and they are done via change order. So it's an add to our total contract value. Sometimes they're deducts, but most often they are, they're adds for a variety of different things. So one thing that we need to establish is the process for approving them, because it is going to be an increase to the contract value. Town Council is the body that approves our contract values. Therefore ultimately, I believe they are the body that would approve change orders. Some of these change orders during construction need a, a pretty immediate answer. If it's an unforeseen condition and they are having to stop and wait for an approval, it can be difficult and detrimental to our schedule. So we're going to be proposing a process with different values of approval and different task forces or bodies that would take a look at those and be able to provide an interim approval and recommendation to Town Council after the fact, based on the dollar amount. This would lessen the burden on Town Council, hopefully shorten those meetings quite a bit versus having to go over every change order every two weeks to have a reviewing body that reviews it and, and gives an authorization ahead of time. So I have some draft language that I'm working on right now that I'll be distributing to our OAC group initially. And then it'll come to this group and ultimately to Town Council to adopt this process.
Any questions, comments from the committee? I'll dig into this one a little bit, just because I'm more entrenched with Brian on, so the financial end of this. So typically, just so everyone understands, typically the town process, we go to, you know, if it's a typical design bid build, we'd go, we'd go for a word of contract and often we include a contingency in the authorization, but we wouldn't put it necessarily in the purchase order, right? So that provides latitude to staff to approve change orders within a certain limit. Typically it's under 10%. In this scenario where, with the RTAs, we're layering on contract after contract. And then from my understanding is, is there could be quite a few change orders along the way, even though like change order may is, is a bad word. So there needs to be a quicker turnaround. So the only thing I would say is, as we authorize RTAs, including authorization for contingency built in each might help that process. And so we have a threshold by which we could go up to and, and then we'd have to go to council. So, and that aligns with the current process and is easier, I think, for the council to understand and digest, rather than just saying, we're going to go to the building committee on all change orders or something along that. Like there has to be a trip threshold, because that's a lot to delegate out for the council. And this is obviously one of our big, well, is the biggest, you know, project we've ever had. So it's going to be tough to release the reins on finances. And Brian, tell me if you agree or disagree, but.
No, I, I agree. I've gone through a build in another community where this process wasn't clear. I had different members of the community sending invoices to finance to be funded and I was usually chasing who, where the approval was and did it seek the proper approval? So I appreciate the process and yeah, well, we'll need that.
Yes, and, and to that point, moving forward, we also are going to have construction requisitions that are going to be upwards of a million dollars or several million dollars as we get into the heat of construction. So we are going to include those as part of our building committee presentations and Town Council presentations for record, if anybody has any questions. But again, typically for those requisitions, the architect reviews it, I review it, and then we provide our recommendation for approvals and payment.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate because that's our current process. Like we're building the EMS building. We have a project manager who reviews it. We have, you know, our team reviews it and then it gets processed, right? That's not uncommon, so I don't know if we need to have committee review on every single invoice that comes in. You know, I think that's why we're hiring, we have multiple layers here to check these. And obviously we're only paying within the limits that we set contract for. So, so you're, just to summarize, you're coming back with some proposed language, draft language for consideration, and then we'll set up a process. And then that will be run through council when it's all baked up.
That's correct, yeah. And we would anticipate that being on the 10th and the 12th meeting, the 10th Building Committee, 12th, no, it's not the 10th, I'm sorry, it's the 7th. Said the 10th is a Sunday. Yes, the 7th for Building Committee and the 12th for Town Council.
Sounds good. All right, moving on to Hazard Land Swap. The only thing I can give an update on is it's three quarters done, sitting at my desk right now. And so I'm, I'm inching towards the goal here in between everything else. So it's, it's, it's amongst the priorities that are on my desk. Anybody have any questions on that one? Okay. All right, Curtis Corner's Fields Planning. You have an update on this one, Kate?
Yes, we do. So relatively recently, we went out to site with the civil engineer and Phil's team to take a look at both the field site as well as the Curtis Corner building. We are looking to finalize the scope of demolition as to which parts of the building we're keeping and which parts we're going to take down and kind of how it impacts the location of the field. So those things are being finalized. We are looking to bid out demolition abatement and some of that make-safe work that happens in that area. Separate from Gilbane's contract, we are looking to do that as a design bid build process. So we'll hire a general contractor to do that scope of work. It's just a smaller scope of work. We're looking to phase this process with demolition first, establishing that location, that, that cost, and then bidding out the remainder of the field work. Some additional study was done onsite about the potential for grade realignment of the field and how we can potentially reuse some of the electrical. We've got some big poles that we'd like to be able to reuse with, you know, outfitted with new lighting. So the team, the civil engineer and Phil are both looking at efficiencies to help preserve as much as we can and bring that cost down so we can focus our, our funding on the actual field itself.
As we're going through this though, let's not forget the, the possibility of some memorials that we also have to look at from that standpoint. You just wanted, I, I'm not, it's, it's just going to be a priority too.
Curtis Corner is a very full building, yes.
Katie, do you have like a timeline? In other words, we know we're going to play all of our games over there this year. Do you foresee this, foresee us playing games there next year? And even, and another question on top of that would be, if they start the demolition, will the field still be accessible?
That, that's the intent. The intent with, starting with demolition is to get that down, get that price solidified, create another parking area. We are using some of Curtis Corner as soil stockpile areas. So we'd like to be able to provide you with some more parking as well. That's another benefit of taking that portion of the building down. But the intent is to not disrupt access or use of the field. There's going to be some power switch-overs, because right now we believe the concession stand is powered through the building. So there will be a little bit of power switch-over that would, as part of this project, be the only impact we'd have to negotiate. But as far as schedule goes, yes, I would, I would plan for this year. We do need to formalize the schedule for next year though, because we would like to finish this at the same time as the high school.
Can you clarify year? When you're saying year, are you talking about 2025 in this case? Or are you talking about the 2025, 26 school year?
25, 26 school year.
Okay, so the spring sports would be able to?
Yeah, so that, that field can be accessible through end of school year next year.
That, yes, that's, that's the current plan. We haven't formalized the schedule for the new construction of the field, but as of right now, that is, that is the intention.
So at our regular Monday meetings, you know, where it's a smaller team, I brought up a couple of points. One is, I'd like to see a schedule that's laid out, because we need to get some clarity. Terry needs clarity on his season. We need clarity as far as coordination. We talked about the soils issue, which I'll talk about in a second. But just understanding, what does this process look like for Curtis Corner? Because I know we've pushed it off and I understand why, but like people are going to start focusing in on that. But honestly, we're all focusing in on it, I think, as a group. You know, we're all starting to ask questions like, where is Curtis Corner? The second is, I just want to bring it to the committee's attention, we had a discussion on soils. So there's a significant amount of soils coming out of the foundation for our school site that's, that is, to save money as part of one of our value engineering items, was to move that soil over to Curtis Corner. That's fine, but that's going to be a massive pile where everyone parks currently. And without that building demoed, we don't have a place to put it other than that area. So I've asked that they go back and figure out those logistics, because we need to know sooner than later. Because we need to know if that works and I need to know if it works for you, Terry, because that's going to push parking all over the place.
That'll push parking, yeah, because you're talking about the front parking lot of Curtis Corner being the dumping area or the storage area.
Well, no, actually the backfield area behind the school, where everyone parks on the field. So now the front parking area, no, probably not right now. I'll let you speak to that, Kate, I mean, or Tony. You're just figuring that back, back area, right? That's what we spoke about?
Yeah, we're, we're waiting on a final sketch for the location, but my understanding is just that backfield area. And again, as we fence off the demolition area, we will leave that front parking lot still available and accessible. And I believe there's also kind of a side road access along the right side of the building that would, that we can, other than potential utility relocations, keep available.
I mean, the other concern I have just personally is, we don't have quantities finite, right? So I don't know on the cut fill, how much is coming back to the old school site, the backfill the foundation? What's residual and how much we can use at the Curtis Corner site? Because that's going to be a clean base. If it's a synthetic field, it's clean based to about two feet. So, and depending on how much we bring it up. So then, we then have to truck it off the Curtis Corner site somewhere else. So I'm not, I guess I'm just pushing you as a team, you need to, like, we need to figure this out, like sooner than later, to give clarity to everyone what's going on and make sure we don't have a, a trip up later in the process. So, and I'll, I'll point to Dave on this. Dave, do you have any other insight on, from a construction angle?
I think you're, you're right on. I mean, there's, I mean, they can raise the elevation of the field. I don't think Terry would complain about having a less swampy field. And you're right, it's, it's a few feet of drainage and gravel underneath a synthetic field. So that site's going to come up, but there's a lot of land there to spread out soil. So I, I don't, I'm not really too concerned about it, except for the short-term pile and parking for the games, because they do use every inch of that, of that grass area. So I, I would say the sooner we can demo Curtis Corner, the better.
One thing I will do is I'll reach out to Rex and Terry at the Parks Department to see, because we own a lot of land there, right? It goes back. I don't know if there's other areas on that site that we could deposit that soil.
I don't think so.
No?
No, it's, it's wet. That was the whole point of the first high school, trying to go there, it's just, it's very wet site.
Everywhere is wet, all right. Unless we take, take away the sledding hill, right, and plateau it.
Well, there is South Road site. I mean, that's up to the town, if the town wants to offer that.
Then, then we got to look at what that future looks like and we're not there yet, so, but no, it's fair.
Well, to piggyback on that, is there something to be said about using that, that field below South Road?
Yeah, it is currently a rec field, but if you're going to be eventually putting housing in there, then that rec field will have to go away. You just have to talk with the, the rec department, but that would be an excellent site for storage.
That would be less.
Yeah, much less impact on parking.
Yeah. Yeah.
But there is, that field is used by some recreation groups.
Yeah.
But everything, everything's a compromise.
Right, sure.
How, how long will those piles be there? Did we say that already?
About a year or more.
Yeah, so we're actively looking at South Road School to get some type of state and federal assistance to put affordable housing there. So, I don't think putting it on that property, we're hoping to start...
Is that field below it part of that property?
No, the field, the field below it, I don't think has anything to do with the, the housing property.
No, it doesn't. It's really not, it's disconnected. You know, you're talking about the sledding hill?
Yeah, the bottom, the flat part of the sledding hill.
Yeah.
There's a field at the bottom of that.
Yeah. Um, no, there is absolutely no plans under the affordable housing plan for that. The only, with the exception of depending if we were able to drop sewers, which is, you know, it's gonna be a while off. It may, may trudge through there, but we can deal with that when it comes. So, I can ask the question, if it's not a well-used space, and that would be a more appropriate, it would certainly maintain the parking for the athletic facility.
Yeah, it's, it is used, it's used for, for some of the youth, the younger youth sports, but I think that that could be reconfigured somewhere. I think that would be less impactful than that other area, if it could be done.
Is this something we could get a confirmation on in a week's time? We do need to submit for an erosion permit, so.
We can move on that.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's internal coordination with Terry and Rex.
I could talk to Rex and coordinate.
All right, and what do you say?
What's that?
Oh, you can coordinate.
I said I can coordinate with Rex if you, if you need me to.
All right, that's fine. He's on vacation next week, so I'll give him a call today.
So, um, I, it's a great idea, I love it. I just need to know a little bit more about it because I, we're finalizing pricing right now with sitework contractors. And if we're gonna propose an alternative site to store the material, I just wanna give them...
It's a hundred yards difference.
Yeah, it's, it's really...
It's almost the same spot.
Okay.
It's, it's, yeah, literally a stone's throw away.
It's probably easier because you wouldn't even need a long access road into it, and it's, it's actually flat unless of a hill.
I'd just like to show it to them, like, on even of a Google Earth shot, and say, instead of here, here, and I want them to confirm their price that regardless of where we store it, their price remains the same, right? I just wanna lock in with it, with a sub to make sure there's no ambiguity whatsoever.
Yeah, somebody in the town can show you, but it's...
Yes, that's fine. I just wanna lock it in with them so we don't have a question or a problem later, that's all. Great idea.
Tony, I'll, I'll send you an image of, of, you know, where the existing site you're proposing versus the proposed under this, and it's almost across the street.
Perfect, thank you.
And if Rex is on vacation next week, maybe we can get an answer.
I'll, I'll call him as soon as we're done here.
Okay, thank you.
Jim's already calling Terry.
Jim's already asked why he called Terry. Perfect. Uh, any other questions, comments on the Curtis Corner Fields? So, schedule and soils management, those are the top priorities right now. Okay. Uh, is that it? Yeah, discussion, action, next meeting, date, time, agenda, items. Does anybody have any suggested items for the agenda? Any new items at this point? All right. Our next meeting, let me pull up my schedule here, would be August, what did you say, Kate? August 8th or 7th? Does anyone have any issues with the August 7th date?
No, so, are we planning on going August 7 and August 21? Is that what our...
That's the plan, yeah.
That's the plan, same, same time, and then we'll switch back to the...
Yeah, the third, so it's the first and third Thursdays that would get us back on schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, 7 and 21. Okay.
And just a reminder at the 7th meeting, we will be looking at the early bid package release. It'll be a larger contract than this first enabling work, so it'll be, we'll be requesting a recommendation to award to Town Council on the 7th.
All right, I'll be teed up for that one. All right. Uh, then we're moving on to public comment. Yeah, the one right in front of you. And Doral, if we keep it under 10 minutes?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be quick.
All right.
Um, okay, so, good morning. Um, so, what you have there is that, a week ago Monday, Town Council meeting, um, I had a presentation about what things that I was concerned about with the project, some things that did have been given to the school commit, Building Committee, School Committee, Town Council. One of the items that came up was on the first page here where I had written, as of note, the fact that Studio Jade's Stage 2 Energy Consumption Summary, blah, blah, blah. The cost was 12 million, 833. It's now 2, 2.725 under last December's quote. So, when I was putting this email together, the morning I was putting together, I was actually look, looking at four different amounts of money, all in the 12 million dollar range. On the second, one of them was the, from the Myakota estimate. This one here was 12 million and change. And then, you have, the next page, I think, is the copy of Gilbane's latest estimate. So, when you see there on HVAC, it's got 12 million and then it's down to 12.3. So, I, I just, and then, and then the, the page of, that was in the Stage 2 Application of Energy Consumption Summary, I obviously picked the wrong 12 million dollar thing, and I, I apologize for, for that error. So, um, if I had written the correct thing, it would have been below that little graph said, instead of what Studio J presented, take it or leave it, blah, blah, blah. Value engineered, the number would have been 2.8 million dollars less than what it was in the original Gilbane estimate of last November. Okay. So, I want you to just look at that Gilbane estimate for a second, because I got some questions on it. I don't know if, if, I don't know if these things, if you'd seen these things or if you'd already talked about it, so you can just cut me off short. If you go over to the, the right column there where the percent change, if I was on the committee, I'd have some questions about any of those, um, those numbers in yellow where you have, where you see a significant amount of lesser monies used for those different line items. So, for instance, half a million dollars less on interior construction. You have, um, 30% less, the one that really jumps off the page is 30% less on furnishings. I don't know what furnishings is. I don't think that's the FFNE thing, which Ride reimburses the town on, but maybe you guys can get interest to that. The communications, then of course, you have the ones where significantly more, especially the one that says electrical site improvements. That's, uh, that's a heck of a jump, 280%. So, if you already talked about them, no deal, you know, to do anything, it's up to you if you wanna, wanna ask the questions at some point. So, let's go to... Where am I here? Okay. So, last thing I have to say about last Monday's, Monday night's Town Council meeting. Except for that error that I just mentioned in my, uh, earlier, I wouldn't change a single thing that I said that night. Everything I said that night, I would say to, say today. Okay, um, over, as the entrance to Hazard today, there's a granite monument, I think, if I remember correctly, it might be the, the class of 1977, um, I believe, and it's a South Kingston High School. I'm hoping that you'll find a nice place for that monument, uh, in the new, the new site plan, that you won't discard it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Arrowhead. So, in the original Studio Jade schematic design, if you remember correctly, on the, on the school street side, it had that beautiful, like, vertical section just to the left of, right of the entrance, and it had the, the arrowhead from our town seal. I'm hoping you'll find someplace in, in that high school, on the outside or in the inside, maybe in the gymnasium, somewhere where that seal and that arrowhead is a prominent feature. Before every Town Council meeting, the, the, the president of Town Council has a statement he makes about how South Kingston honors the heritage of, um, our indigenous neighbors who, from whose land we now live on, but it, um, it's not enough. We have, we haven't done enough for, um, for the Native Americans who lived here. We, when I was a kid, when I was growing up here, the best, some of the best high school athletes in South Kingston, without question, were members of the Narragansett, had, you know, families from the Narragansett Indians. The Thomases, La Corbanaire, just go, Fairweather. I mean, it's just incredible, right? And unfortunately, over the years, and still today, even today, in last year's enrollment numbers from the state, from the state, South Kingston still has the highest percentage of, of Native American students in our schools. But they are some of the, unfortunately, they, we haven't helped them enough academically, and they're always, um, the, the, the parts where it says, um, in need of extra help and blah, blah, blah. Now, the, the school committee has just had an equity audit done. Hopefully, they're gonna take that, all that information and somehow start directing funds, enough funds for those students, or students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, so they, their scores come up and we can have four and five, five-star high schools, four and five-star schools, which, if we have four and five-star schools for, and we get there and have, you know, we stay there, then people that wanna move to communities will have a third option besides Barrington East Crenish. The option that we used to be back in the 90s is, Mr. Manning certainly knows, okay? That's what we wanna get back to. That's how you're gonna incre, incre, uh, increase enrollment. Okay.
Doral, Doral.
Almost, hold on.
I, I would just point out, um, the high school for the last three years has been a four-star school.
No, I, right, I gotcha. We wanted to go to five, though, right? All right.
How you doing, Doral? Couple more minutes here?
Yeah, so this two-page thing here, right? Okay. This is, you've seen the, the top page, the case for regionalization. So, if you look at either of these pages, and this is, all this information came from last fall's NASDAQ numbers from South Kingston and Narragansett. And what both of these sides show is what you can, where, where are these students gonna come from to keep the high school full of students? So, basically, unless this affordable housing thing has, is like, incredible and we have all these new families moving in, you know, we all hope that'll happen. How long it will take, I have no idea. But within five years of this school opening up, so the, the key in the year is 32-33. So, if it opens up in '27, five years later, you're gonna be at a point in that high school where you're gonna have to make a, you, well, hopefully you'll made the decision before that, but one way or another, you're gonna have to do something. So, your two altern, basically, your two biggest alternatives are to regionalize with the Narragansett or flip it over and make it a junior, senior high school, okay? Grade seven through 12. Okay, last thing. So, you won't be hearing me beat this to death, because this is actually officially, this is officially, I'm not, I know you've been crying wolf. This is my last meeting I'm coming to. Right there in that box are like a, like a year's supply of architectural record and some other stuff you guys can have. All right, so, um, whoops.
Didn't hand it out. Sorry.
Okay, so, the, it just came out by, um, by the government. I'm looking at this thing that says Section 48 Clean Energy Investment Credits. So, um, wind and solar, they killed them. Drove, drove a stake through them. But here's the, the big, beautiful bill change. What it says here, for geothermal, those credits are available if your project's completed by the end of 2027, you get 30% in, of any, of anything that you put into the project. Now, I, I got the feeling from a week ago Monday that, that you've driven a stake into the heart of that one, too. But what I'm saying is this, the number, the number calculation for this, for the school, um, the proper school size was miscalculated. It wasn't 725, at most it's 700. So, I've sent that to you a bunch of times. You probably could wallpapered the room with all of them by now, but the problem is you have, may have going forward is this, if you have more places where you have to, for reconciliation, if things go up, you know, prices go up in certain places, or you have, you know, changed orders or whatever, and, and the cost goes up and up, what's gonna happen? It's gonna, what's, what's gonna happen is what's already happened. The things that you really wanted in the school are gonna be gone, 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 gone. Or the quality materials drops, or you have less glass. Okay? So, here's my last pitch. About two, two meetings ago, Building, School, Building Committee, uh, I believe Studio Jade said they were gonna try and, and bring the, the footage down from 154, 792, or whatever it is, to 154. Okay, well, 154, 792 is enough if you look on that, if you look on this page here, that would hold 728 students. would hold 728 students using the right calculation. And if we didn't have the, if we didn't have the mandate to have CTE programs, with 50 years from now, who knows what the mandates will be in this state? With today's figures of 197 square feet per student, that school would hold 786 students.
Doral, you're well above 10 minutes here, so.
One minute. It's my last time, so.
I understand, I've given you a lot of latitude, but we got to zip it up. Please.
I know, you don't like to hear this put in. So if you tell them to reduce the size and reduce the number of students in it by 10, 15, 20 students, then you'll have money so that you won't have to do any more reconciliation and put some of the things back than you wanted it to.
Thank you, Doral. Anybody else? I don't see anybody else in the audience. Call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good day.